Alan Rue, McMahon and Rue Associates. We're here in that behalf of the owners. For that, the owners are here in the audience also if you can answer any questions you might have concerning the building. The warehouse is a little under 11,000, not quite 12,000 square feet, a little over 12,000 square feet. It has a access that's approved for tractor-trailers driving in, a raised loading dock to unload. We have a total of 24 parking spaces. We're showing 16 to be built and 18, uh, 16 to be built, no, wait a minute, 18 to be built on one or the other, 16 to be built and 8 to be land banked out front. We have stormwater, a report that we delivered to Aaron tonight. We have stormwater ponds to mitigate the stormwater that's shown on the new plans. We have, we've given you some architecturals as such as they are. There's a dimension problem on the architecturals, the size of the buildings a little bit. The architect didn't have the answer, the right number in there, so. There's landscaping, we've shown landscaping on our plan. There's a handicap parking space out front. There are new doors placed on the architecturals for access. Of course, we've got sanitary sewer through water and all the other things. We think it's a good plan and if there's any questions, we'd be more than fine to
I would ask if you would clarify the, please, the picture that shows from a front view looking back at the 30 by 30 building. If you would clarify, please, the loading dock or the loading door that they're for everybody.
Sure, certainly. The loading dock is raised above the ground. We don't have a sunken area for the tractor-trailers to back into. For the simple reason, you just don't have enough range. So that's going to be a raised platform and it's going to be a main overhead door with the inside of the, I don't know what they call it, there's an adjustment for the various tractor-trailers that pull the raises up and down to match it. So we drive straight, you know, come straight in. There's a main door on the west side. There will be stairs down for that four feet, steps down. And then adjacent to that, there's another entry door that goes into the lower area that's going to be the warehouse. The architecturals don't show it correctly, but we'll fix that.
So the required parking is 24 spaces. And if I count correctly, you've got 22, including the ones that are being land banked. You're short two spaces.
Did I miscount? Because that's what I was just drawing on myself.
I counted them like three times and I come up with a total of 22.
We will make it 24.
But you can only land bank six of them. So you gotta add, you gotta add two somewhere.
One out front and one in the back. We've got plenty of room.
Okay.
Is it still 24? Because the original, I know at zoning board meeting, it was 24, but the size of the building is wrong. It's less than that square footage, so we'll have to double check on those, the amount of spaces. Because before it was 12,000, it was over 12,000, now it's less than 12,000.
It's less than 12,000, yeah.
We'll have to double check that.
So whatever they were up to, and I thought we had it right, but maybe you.
Get the, I don't think it's going to be related to COVID.
Yeah, I was just wondering what was the color going to be on the buildings? Oh, my goodness.
Roof is going to be black. The official didn't show that. Roof is black.
Yeah.
Body is charcoal gray, the doors are white. And the trim will all be in black, all around, around the doors and windows.
What's the square footage?
11,948.
Probably not.
What is it? I believe it's 11,948.
Okay, so get up to 24. You gotta be 11,500 or less to eliminate this space. It's one for each 500 square feet.
Okay.
So we'll correct that.
And you mentioned on the landscaping, the plan shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, like 8. It's so small, I can't read what it says here. It's some kind of Latin, oh, hydrangeas, camembert wood, and a false cypress. Is that like there's a shroom cypress versus a false cypress? You guys are the agricultural.
Well, Dale just picked out some plants to put there to go.
Is there going to be landscape properly? Well, is there going to be anything anywhere else besides in the front of the building? At one point, I saw a sketch that was submitted that showed a berm to the, to the, to the west. And on the top of the berm, it looked like there was going to be evergreens or something. Are you still planning this berm?
We're not.
Okay.
That's between my house and the building.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he wouldn't need it. Honestly, he needs a berm for privacy or anything for his house to the building.
I'm sure what they do for a living.
Well, I don't say they need it, I'm just saying, but originally, they submitted a sketch that showed a berm with stuff in it. So I don't know, this is the first I heard, he's no longer going to do it. But it's up to the board if you think, you know.
Berms a lot of times in the feed range, so it's difficult to.
No, I'm not saying about the berm, I'm talking about the landscaping. If you think just the shrubs they're going to put in on the front is sufficient, then that's up to you.
Well, Bill's got to look at it, right? Bill has to look at it. He definitely.
With what they do for a living, I'm sure this is going to look nice.
Yeah, I'm personally not concerned if we want to landscape.
All right, I'm just, the point is.
Typically, it's the frontage. If the frontage is taken care of, I mean.
Okay, I know this board isn't used to doing site plan reviews, but if it doesn't show up on the site plan and then it gets constructed, you don't like the way it looks, you have no way to enforce anything.
Yeah.
So if you want something, it's got to be on the approved site plan.
Yep.
I'm not saying you need it or don't need it, I'm just saying if, you know, if you're totally going to rely on the owner to just landscape it as he pleases, that's fine, but then if you don't like the way it turns out, it's tough noogies to the village because you didn't, if it's not on the plan, he doesn't have to do it.
Yep, I'm still standing by.
Okay.
Landscaping it on the front of the building.
And there's not going to be a door that leads out to, on the Orchard Street side of the building?
There is a door.
There is.
We have four doors. Two doors, one door to the north, one door to the south, two doors to the west. We did have unrecommendation, Aaron, you're required of.
And the latest man's show. Aaron, I think you've got those.
Yes, sir.
Will you read the street meetings? We're going to have, we're going to have local calls out there for our wholesale business. But that's just, that'll be just a pickup, a spot for other floors to pick up other materials as a loading pack area. We haul flowers for other floors also.
The main purpose of the building is we're receiving. Our supplier from Miami is pretty much cutting us off doing a loading dock. So now we're putting a loading dock in, so we're pretty much receiving over there. There might be one or two people there during the day, but mostly it's going to be tractor pull-in, they load themselves, and then we'll go over in the morning and pull the stuff back for the shop. There wasn't enough, enough real estate on Kilburg property to put a loading dock, so we went across the street.
We also looked at the property between the Sonic Temple and the mother's house. The David's too narrow, there was too many utilities in there, the storm sewers and the village and other things, so if it wasn't going to work, the company will not back in off the street. They want to be able to pull in at radius and back up the loading dock and pull out. They won't back in off the street.
That's better English, you get a player truck to come in there and turn around.
So the other places weren't going to work, so that's why we decided to put in this property. Logistics are going to be a little bit difficult for us because we have to, you know, bring the stuff back and, you know, that, we'll have to live with that.
It's better than not getting flowers at all.
Exactly. Yes.
Do you intend to have any kind of sign?
I don't believe we need a sign. I'm going to put an address on there, but that would be it.
If you do decide you need a sign, you know, there's a separate permitting process for that.
Okay. Okay. We'll cross that first if we have to, but I don't foresee a sign right now.
Here's wall backs for security lighting and that sort of thing, so.
Let's directly cross. The Sonic Temple is in the temple.
The Sonic Temple?
Yeah.
And I did receive a phone call from them inquiring about this, you know, the sign that was put up. And they had no objections. They said it's zoned appropriately and they know, knowing the owner, they know it'll be taken care of, well taken care of.
Of course, the fact that, my concern was that if it was residential, you'd have trucks in the nighttime and they'll keep their lights on most likely. So you'd have lights shining across the street, but I doubt if there's anybody there, two or three.
Well, that is true, it'd be the closest housing, but I don't foresee the problem is if there's a wood line all along there, the Sonic Temple.
Your house really is the only residential property in the neighborhood.
Well, my house and my mother's house, just kids' homes. And we have our great name, Xerox, so.
I think the next closest, I think, is your son's behind, but it won't be affected.
Well, that's not going to affect us.
And it's, we get shipments three times a week, so it's not like there'll be tractor-trailer pull-in there every 10 minutes. It's, it's a big expense for us. We really didn't want to do it, but we have to, so. It's, it is where it is.
Now getting to the colors of the building, the roof is black and the body is a charcoal gray, doors are white with black trim around the old doors and windows.
Julia, Julia has a lot of funky colors, so she would say.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah. It'll be greenery that will brighten it up.
Yeah, it's right.
14 by 16, those two doors on the side, will the trucks be able to pull in or will they just?
Tractor-trailer trucks?
No, 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 no.
And?
The ones that will take what you have inside from the tractor-trailer trucks.
Our vans.
Take those out to your co-savers or whoever applies.
Right, well, the vans we have now don't fit in a regular door, they're higher vans, those dock vans, so they need taller doors.
But those are not designed for them to pull in. I guess just designed to pull up to.
And bedrock or whatever will load that. We'll have a fork truck in the building and pallet jacks. And we're also planning on, you know, storing all our event stuff over there for our wedding products and all that, you know, our hard goods, arches and all that stuff, because we just don't have the room where we are now.
Well, you just keep on expanding and expanding. I think that's a good thing.
This is fair last expansion.
Okay, you think you can buy 214, is that fair?
Yeah.
Oh, there, really.
I wouldn't say last expansion, but.
For me. You can try right now.
Sorry you have to go through all those. The way things are these days, huh? I'm sorry? It's the way things are these days. I'm sorry you have to go through with having to build something, but maybe you're right with it or something.
Well, it's just, it's unavoidable and there's nothing we can do, so we have to comply with the trucking companies.
You don't have any comments on the?
So if you have other comments, you need to now turn to Seater. And it's an unlisted action, so that means you got to go through the short environmental assessment form that the applicant, or the applicants in here, filled out. And then go through the part two, the impact assessment, decide whether there's a no impact, a small impact, or a moderate, a large impact. And then based on your answers to those questions, you decide whether or not the construction of the building will result in any significant adverse environmental impacts or not.
And as we take a look at what is divided here in part one, and we'll look at part two, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? And as I'm looking at site and the things that I have, the code and all in particular, do you see any problems with land use?
Well, given, you know that the property is zone general industrial, and this is an industrial use, a warehouse, then there's no conflict with zoning regulations or the adopted land use plan.
Which would extend right into, right across Orchard at that particular point, right into Xerox, yeah, in terms of.
Yes, that's all zone general industrial.
I would say that in light of that, there would be no small or small impact when it Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
That's kind of a tough one, because right now it's, it's a field, it's a field, it's vacant land, so nothing's happening there. So obviously, if you put up a shed in the property, it's going to result in a change in use or intensity of land, but again, it's properly zoned and not so.
Are you ready, Bill? Or a small impact? Small impact would occur to it, but I don't think anything is moderate or large. Would the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? I do not believe that it would do so. It's an industrial area, but I think that it will be, a building that will be certainly not in any way impairing the characteristic of that.
Mayor Barris, they don't have the second, I don't know where that came from, but the rest of the board members don't have the carpet you're looking at.
So, yeah, I would just.
Well, it goes, the question goes along with, if you look at number six on page two of the short form, where it says, is the proposed action consistent with a predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? And the applicant says yes, and I would tend to agree with that. So that, and that goes along with question number three.
Just lie down.
And then, and then number four, where it talks about a critical environmental area, again, you go to number seven, is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? It doesn't, so, so obviously it can't have any impact on a critical environmental area because it's not located within a critical environmental area. Then number eight, number eight again talks about traffic, and the next question relates to traffic, so.
Number four?
Number five. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Not at all. I don't believe that, well, the only thing would be, it wouldn't impair it. The only thing you would have coming out is during the day, you might, I don't know how often you go in terms of taking what's in the warehouse and taking it to your wholesale district or something.
I have no idea, Mayor, how to answer that. It's not going to be heavily used, no. We'll get probably, we'll work much week in there and probably visit the building twice a day with one or two vehicles.
It's a four, they have a four-lane road there, so it's not only a two-lane, so hope that matters at all.
Well, the four lanes that go on from that point to the east may be changing in a couple of years, depending upon what happens with Xerox, so. Right now, it's still working. Number six, proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? I don't believe so. Faster incorporate even available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities. I don't believe that. I don't believe that it will increase the use of energy, actually. It's not like it's an industrial application. It's more of a.
It will be heated.
It will be heated.
It will be heated, yes, but.
Well, heating electric, when we talk about putting some solar panels on at some point, somebody will help with that.
So that would mean incorporating reasonable, available energy conservation renewable sources, Proposed impact, existing public, private water supplies? I don't believe so. Because you won't be really using water, it's not like you're growing anything in there.
No, it would be.
There's going to be one bathroom, I think you said the other night, right?
We're, we're putting in one bathroom at this point, but we're going to leave it open for, if I have to add another bathroom, then I'll have the ability to, that's why we changed it to be how the sanitary sewer came in the side of the building instead of across the building.
Well, certainly, even if you had two sinks and two toilets, that's not going to overload, you know, the NER County Water Authority for supply of water to the Village of Webster.
I don't think it will greatly impact the jail. Nor will it impact the wastewater treatment utilities, so. Prepare the character or quality of important historic archaeological aesthetic resources? I don't believe so. I don't think that there's anything there, although it could be wrong. I suspect that as it exists right now, there's none in pairing the quality of the site at all, so.
No, maybe it's not.
No, I don't believe. Will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater quality, or fauna? Obviously, you're going to be taking some of the property that's there, that's green space right now, I guess, and removing it, but I wouldn't say air quality, no groundwater. I don't think it'll have an effect, a change in that natural resource. Wetlands, you're providing for a couple of areas there, right, in terms of ponds?
Yeah.
And that.
Rain garden.
Rain gardens. Yeah. I would say that rain garden would improve.
Well, I'm trying, the property is adjacent to a federal wetlands, but your property, this property doesn't, isn't incorporated in any of the map wetland?
No. No, it's not here. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage Having that proposed, looks like it is a retention point, basically, that's there or to it.
Well, they filed a stormwater prevention plan during the construction, Aaron's, he's your stormwater person for the village, so it's subject to his approval of that. Theoretically, if he thinks it's going to cause an issue, he'll change the plan and address wherever it needs to be addressed.
In terms of increase to the potential for, I'm not sure that it would do that necessarily for drainage problems. Personally, I don't think.
Yeah.
And we think no, small may occur, but otherwise. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? I don't believe so. In terms of creating a hazard for human health, I don't think so. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
In part three, correct that, we move to short form environmental assessment, part three, determination of significance.
So since you, since you determined that, that there are only going to be either no or small impacts to the environment, then I think it would be appropriate to ask for a motion to determine that, that the project would not have any.
Adverse.
Any significant adverse environmental impacts. You got to do that by resolution, by motion.
Then I would. ask for a a motion indicating that the impact would be negligible or extremely small in terms of the environmental. A motion. Okay, I'll hear it.
What do you think?
You just need a motion that the proposed action, the construction of this warehouse will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact.
I'll make that motion.
Excellent.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Valpene?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passed.
And so now you can go on to a motion to either approve, deny, or approve with conditions the site plan that is before you. I would only suggest that if you're gonna approve it, you do it only on the, with the condition that they add the two parking spaces, one on the front and one on the back.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
And I would propose this resolution, site. An original site plan review and approval for eleven Orchard Street, Webster, New York. Tax ID zero eight zero point zero six, one twenty point two two, to construct a warehouse, loading dock in driveway parking, with the addition of two parking spaces, total in twenty-four. Pursuant to G one zoning district, village code section one seventy-five twenty-four, property zone G one, general industrial. Is that fit, Doug?
Yes, it's actually G I for general industrial, not G one, but. It's hard to tell with the.
It needs to as well.
It does help.
I'm a lot, trust me, I mean, bless.
Well, it is hard to tell if it's an I or a one, so.
So, uh, motion is before the board.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Valpene?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry for the difficulty of it, but. I appreciate your patience.
So, Justice? Of the only thing you can. Do you see, on the signature line, instead of the zoning board chairman, if you have changed it to mayor?
Al.
Al. On, on the site plan itself, do you have the signatures? Instead of zoning board chair on the top line, can you make it mayor?
Okay. After you do that, I'll have all the appropriate folks sign it and.
So we can get started.
So we can get started later?
Just check with Aaron, whatever.
Check with me, you gotta file a three actual permit, and he'll talk to me tomorrow.
Does that just like to get started on the problem again?
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Hopefully that's a long process.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'll be in tomorrow morning.
Happy holidays.
See you then for tomorrow morning.
I'll be in tomorrow morning at seven AM.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Good night, Merry Christmas.